Thoughts and impressions are on Treasure Island?
Impressions, if you can turn the degree temperature of the water up a little bit, I'd appreciate that for the swims. That would be most welcome. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity for the question. And Commissioners, my first impressions have been nothing but impressive so far. You know, between city staff meeting with the Commissioners and the Mayor, and the warmth and the greetings from the people at the Billmar, from the people I've talked to on the streets, the young man that I talked to in Publix the other day for about 10 minutes just to get a feel for who he is and how long he's been here. I mean, there's some good people here, and it's a great community. You know, I'm impressed with the operations that are going on with city staff, the things that they're doing, that they've done, and that they're undertaking. And I've had nothing but professional interactions with them. So it's been nothing but positive so far. There has not been any negative whatsoever. I do love the community. I got out again this morning, got a little walk on the beach. I didn't take a swim yet, though, today. I'm going to jump in later.
Perfect.
But it's good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, just for the public benefit who may be here in the audience or watching online, the first part of our candidate's presentation is going to be a presentation on their kind of draft first-year plan of what they would do as city manager if selected. So I will turn it over to you, and it's a 10-minute presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Payne, and Commissioners. Good morning, Mayor Payne, Commissioners, city staff, and community members. My name is Chuck Anderson, and I would like to present to you the first-year plan, challenges, and opportunities. I have my slides broken down into timeframes, some key goals, and also some actions. And what I would like to start with is just to say that you will not see everything in this slide deck or have read in my first-year plan that is encompassing in a first-year plan. I would probably need six to eight hours to talk about every component that could go into a first-year plan. So what I'd like to do is just talk about the most prevalent things that are most important, but let you know that I'm not leaving things out intentionally or that things will be overlooked. I would focus on three pillars: the commission, the community, and the city staff. I would need to, as part of my key goals, understand the city's current state, its key issues, and the stakeholder expectations. And how do you do that? That's the action part. You know, I would meet with the city commission. I would prefer to do it initially in an open session, and I would like you to identify your priorities as you would see for me if I was selected as your city managers. Excuse me, as your city manager. You know, I'd like to meet with the department heads as a group first and then establish one-on-one meetings with them, and community leaders, individuals who are in the community who have concerns about the community, who want to help the community be better and move forward. You know, those are the people that I want to meet with. You know, for example, I'd like to meet with the Chamber of Commerce president or CEO. You know, for example, school superintendent in the area. Individuals like that, individuals who will have an influence with our community and people who are concerned about the community. Today's June 20th, so there's two things that are prevalent on my mind: hurricane season and budget season. We're in the middle of both of those, and so those are at the forefront. I need to understand the city's emergency management posture, our hurricane preparedness, make sure I understand the comprehensive emergency management plan, the city charter. And I'm also going to be taking a look at the city's financial health. When the manager does come in, you'll be close to almost the new fiscal year, which starts in one October. But having an understanding about the revenues and the expenses in the CIP is very important. I'd also start immersions, where I would get out to the locations where the people operate and where they work from. You know, make sure I'm walking around in the city hall to see how people are operating and what they're doing, and to find out the status of projects. There's a number of projects that are being undergone right now and also that are on the docket for coming up shortly in the future. You've got the master transfer station. You've got the public safety complex, the public works complex. You know, you've got the living shoreline piece and the golf course, and those are just a few off the top of my head. You know, and the last item under actions there is to initiate and build engagement. You know, I want to participate in the local events that go on to get to know the community and to understand the community, attend civic events, community group meetings, and do a little bit of management by walking around. And that's that bottom line there, that MBWA. What I don't have on there, but I would like to include is it's also important for the city manager to establish a good-work-life balance. You know, the city manager and their role, it's not a 100-yard dash. It's a marathon. So you want to make sure that you're pacing yourself through these things, but you're also setting the right example. Because if staff sees you working 68 hours a week, they'll think that that's the normal pace. And what you want to do is set the right example so people understand that you have to achieve a good-work-life balance. Sometimes that you'll work more hours than you think you have to, but there's other times when you can actually throttle back a little bit because achieving that balance is important. When I move into the 60-day realm, you want to have a deeper understanding of the -- excuse me, I would like to have a deeper understanding of the municipal operations, formulate the short-term strategies, but also take another more thorough look at the major projects. You know, the projects are held up by timelines and financially. And to get a good understanding of where we are with that project component is very important. The project I mentioned, the projects I mentioned before plus others. You know, it's important to understand where we are. ARPA, for example, if you're going to use those federal monies, they have to be expended by 31 December of this year. So we want to make sure we're not going to lose any of that grant money or federal money that we have achieved. I'm also going to begin initial stages of some strategic planning. You know, we have a comprehensive plan that was done last year, so I'm sure land development code updates will need to be done. And so I want to take a look at what we're doing from aligning the goals with the comprehensive plan. You know, going to continue to take a look at the city's financial health and continue to build upon that internal and external engagement. As I move into the 90-day realm, you know, you're going to take a look, and I'm going to take a look, pardon me, on implementing the initial improvements. There's some things that you can see that might be easy wins to do and to implement. You know, as you're assessing within the first 60 to 90 days and from when you hit the ground, you're taking a look at how operations are going. And some things might just need a simple little tweak. It seems like most things would be running well already, but there's nothing wrong with taking a look at them, taking a look and see if they can be improved upon. I'd like to facilitate a team-building event with the department heads, and it would be an off-site team-building event. Everything I've looked at so far and what I've seen to see, you've got a great department head team. It's how do I integrate into that team if I'm selected as the manager? And I'd like to do that as an off-site. You know, you take a look at your manual, key manuals and policies to see if they need to be updated or changed. And I'd like to engage the commission and ask them about, do you do celebrations for incorporation dates? Treasure Island was incorporated May 5, 1955. It'll be 70 years next May. You know, is that something that you celebrate? Or do you do that in 25-year increments? And, you know, in my first 90 days, that's something that I would approach the commission on and ask them. I'm going to continue the public engagement and host town halls. And we can even take the town halls or forums and focus on particular subjects: elevate TI, the city's budget, economic development. You know, we can pick subjects and have town halls to reach out to the community. When I moved into the first 180 days, expand on the leadership role that I have in the driving the project milestones. Take a look at the metrics that we're measuring within the city. This isn't going to be the beginning of when I'm going to start looking at the metrics, but maybe it's a time when I'm going to start evaluating how we're doing it, measuring, and what we're measuring. You know, you're taking a look at, are they key? Are they the right metrics? And are we using the right tools to report them? And what are those metrics saying? We're going to close out hurricane season. We'll have that 30 November timeframe in there. And what's important is you want to capture your lessons learned. You know, hopefully, there's no lessons that need to be captured this year, but if there are, we want to make sure that we document them from a historical preference so that people have an idea of what had happened. And so you have them for going on future use and future hurricane seasons. I will have already have touched base with the Florida County City Management Association because we'll have the legislature meeting the following March. And there could be pending litigation or pending items that do come up that could affect the city. So what are those items? You know, those are the things that I want to know. And again, this wouldn't be, I would wait till the 180-day to do the daytime frame to do this, but that is something that would be done. I'd like to give the commission a six-month "how's it going" report, things that I looked at, what I wanted to do from when I arrived here. You know, and then my status on how it's been, what I've accomplished or what I've not been able to accomplish. Take a look at promoting or initiating professional development opportunities for staff, first-time supervisors, how to have difficult conversations, performance evaluations. You know, how do you train your replacements so you have succession planning in place? Second bullet from the bottom is one of the goals that you have in your strategic plan about environmental stewardship and sustainability. You know, it's important for this community to be able to track that. And we want to take a look and provide an update to the commission on where we are having to do with our environmental stewardship and our initiatives. And finally, I think we will have a City of Treasure Island Employee of the Year. They need to be recognized, and that needs to be celebrated. You know, there's one person, I think, that's selected from all the staff, and they are recognized as that person. And it's appropriate to make sure that the community knows who they are. Remaining six months, I look to solidify long-term strategies that we put into place, take a look at the key initiatives, and make sure we're making sustained progress on those. I'd like to engage the commission on strategic planning. Your plan is complete in 2025, if everything is completed. Does the commission want to have an addendum to the plan? Do they want to do a whole new planning session and start a whole new strategic plan? If so, that's something that we would need to have a discussion on. I'm going to continue to engage and increase and maintain stakeholder collaboration and promote a culture of continuous improvement and innovation with city staff. In conclusion, I would just like to say flexibility is key to a first-year plan because you can't anticipate everything. You can have a plan and you can put it in place, but something could affect it a day later, an hour later. You know, my presentation, I sent it off to Doug. 15 minutes later, I thought of something I wish I included. You know, you can just adapt it just like that. You can't anticipate everything. And when I transitioned from Colorado to Montana, you know, I went from a public works director to a deputy city manager, and I went from a smaller community to a semi-large small or, excuse me, larger community of about 60,000 people. It was a different dynamic from one community to the next. And I had to prepare myself, and I did my research to make sure that I understood what was going to be some of my challenges when I went to Montana. You know, and I prepared by looking at their documents, their briefings, their budgets, presentations, watching meetings and such. And I bring that up because when I looked at the position here at Treasure Island, I know that there is a desire to have a manager with some coastal management experience, and I don't have coastal management experience in my background. But what I do have in my background is I've evacuated from hurricanes and typhoons before when I lived in Florida, up in Fort Walton Beach, and when I lived in Guam. When I lived in Hampton Roads, Virginia, Hurricane Irene hit in 2011, and we had coastal flooding and storm surge like I had never seen. And I was working in an EOC, in an EOC capacity, Emergency Operations Center capacity. So I have those experiences, but I don't have that direct coastal manager experience that was referred to in the brochure. If I was hired as their next city manager, I do have a commitment that I would like to state, that I would lead Treasure Island through its opportunities and challenges. I would regularly review city operations, show appreciation, and be recognizable to city staff and also to the community. I'd like the community to know who the city manager is. I want to collaborate, 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 and communicate, communicate, communicate. I think those are six Cs that are very prevalent and very important for a city manager to be successful. So I'd like to say thank you, Mayor Payne, Commissioners, and city staff. And this has been a great experience up to this point, and I'm sure it will be good after this. I just wanted to say I appreciate the time. I appreciate the effort and the hosting that the community has done for me. I appreciated last night meeting community members, and getting to know them will be my goal. Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Well done. All right. Well, we will move into our -- we have some interview questions prepared. You're welcome to take a seat.
Thank you.
It's a long time to be standing up. So we're going to, we have some preset questions that we're going to ask all of the candidates, and we're going to rotate through the commission to ask those so you don't have to hear my voice all morning. So we'll start, and Vice Mayor Doctor can ask our first question.
It's clear that, I'm sorry, it's clear that you've done a lot of research on the city and on the position. So in doing your homework for these sessions, what have you learned about the City of Treasure Island, its organization, and were there any surprises?
It was, I found most interesting how Treasure Island came to be. You know, when some, excuse me, a couple of gentlemen, and I don't recall their names, and putting some treasure in the beach. And a gentleman who built it, built the first hotel here, I think, was Coney Island. And what did they say? He purchased the land for maybe a dollar and a quarter per acre or something along those lines. But, and it makes me think like, wow, you know, to have the forethought of something like that that long ago would be amazing. You know, what I've found so far with Treasure Island is you've got a very well-run organization, from what I see, from a city manager perspective. You know, the departments and the collaborativeness between them is very good. You know, they respect each other. They work well together. After talking to the Commissioners yesterday and walking around the community and going to certain locations, you know, and talking to committee or, excuse me, community members last night, you know, there's some things there that, you know, I think people would like to see. And, you know, I had a few individuals approach me and having to want to talk economic development. And they were talking about a few items that they thought that, you know, opportunities for the city. You know, opportunities for the city maybe to do public-private partnership where the city could work, reach out, maybe extend an offer to, you know, see how we can enhance what we have and develop some of those areas. For example, is it John's Pass or Clock Tower? You know, those areas right there, those are ripe for development. You know, and just how do we get the right development in there? You know, I think that would be key. There are some amazing places along the beach here, and you've got a beautiful beachfront. And the hotels and the condominiums are, you know, first-rate. The people seem to be first-rate, and they're enjoyed continually. So how do you enhance those things while taking a look at the opportunities and challenges that are ahead? You know, whether it comes to, you know, parking, you know, or taking a look from parking, economic development, initiatives being run for having to do with the elevation of the sea level. You know, there's a lot of things that can be undertaken to help and assist the city.
Thank you.
Okay. All righty. As you were doing your homework for these sessions, what have you learned about the City of Treasure Island?
That's the one we just --
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. Sorry.
It's our first.
It is still kind of --
Not enough coffee yet.
I think I need more coffee. Do you tend to make decisions quickly and instinctively or more slowly and methodically? Tell us about a time when your method did not achieve the results you expected, and what happened?
No, I do not make decisions if, you know, right off kneecap event. I'll come up with what I think might be a viable solution and think a problem through a little bit before I come to a decision. I do like to solicit input on decisions because I'll be the first person to say I'm not the smartest person in the room. You know, and I often use people as sounding boards to find out perspectives that I may not have considered. When I'm approached with a problem, what I like to do is I think I'll formulate it through my head, and I think I have a solution for it. But I'll then engage people that I consider, you know, trusted advisors or people that, who I think are very good at, you know, thought solutions and work with them and talk to them and bounce things off them because I would like them to constructively criticize what I'm thinking just to create a better answer and a better solution. When you mentioned one time when I was trying, undergoing an initiative, and it didn't go through, when I was stationed, or, excuse me, when I lived in Steamboat Springs, Colorado, I had hired an airport manager. And the airport manager was a very difficult position. It was a general aviation airport. It was called Bob Adams. And it was a small staff of about five people. And the individual had come in, and he had minimal experience. And, and so I was working with the individual, you know, almost on a weekly basis as we were talking and, you know, having our weekly meetings. And, and it came up that he wasn't passing on information to his staff. And so I started digging into that a little bit. And I had found out that two of the staff members had not been able to, you know, re-enroll how they wanted to re-enroll for their medical benefits. And so I went and talked to the staff members, and they said that, you know, they didn't know that it was an open period for that. And I know I had passed it on in a couple of the staff meetings I had had. So I started digging in more with the airport manager and come to find out that he really was just holding all the information back and not passing anything on to his staff. And so I tried to talk to him a little bit about that and, you know, talk to him about building a team. And he wasn't very open to hearing what I had to say. So instead of going into engaging with him, I grabbed a book called "The Five Dysfunctions of a Team", and I gave him a copy of the book. And I told him by the next week he needed to read the first three chapters, and we were going to come back and talk about them. And he said, "So you're giving me a homework assignment?" And I said, "Yes." And he's like, "Well, what if I don't do it?" And I said, "That would be your choice. I'm recommending that you do it. I'm trying to help you work through this." You know, the importance of a team, you know, can't be understated. And having your people trust you and allow you to communicate with them is paramount. And quite honestly, it's in your job description. So if you're not ready to do it, it's in your job description. We'll just have to have a further discussion, and we'll involve HR. Unfortunately, I worked with the individual for about another month, and it was hit or miss on being able to read the chapters and have good discussions after that. And unfortunately, I had to let him go. But when I did let him go, I immediately hired a, it was a female Coast Guard pilot who is still there today and is probably the most, one of the most phenomenal leaders I've ever met before. And she jumped into that position, and she, the first thing she did was get with the folks and say, "What do I need to do? How do I need to talk to you?" And, and it works. And I still stay in touch with her, and she's doing very well. But thank you for asking the question.
Thank you.
Tell us about the most difficult citizen encounter that you've experienced and how you handled it.
I haven't had many citizen encounters. No, I'm only kidding. I've had a few. Normally, they happen when my boss is away, and so I'm sitting as a city manager, and that's usually when everybody wants to, I don't want to say come out of the woodwork, but yeah, that's when everybody's going to come out. And, you know, they think that there's, you know, time and opportunity. We have a gentleman in our community that is a continual, a continual attendee at our city commission meetings. And he's not a positive contributor to the, to the meetings. He's quite disruptive. And it's, it's good I don't go into names or anything like that. But, but what he does is he continually comes in and almost to the point of where there's a beratement a little bit that's directed toward the commission, but occasion onto staff. And when it happened one time in a commission meeting, I just addressed the gentleman and said, "If we could step outside, we could have a discussion about that, but I'm not going to sit here and let you berate city staff. That is unacceptable." You know, and so the mayor and I went outside and had a discussion with the individual. The mayor asked me if I had it. I did. He left, went back inside and continued the meeting. But the encounter with the citizen, it was a growing frustration, not at the city overall, but more at the legal system because he had had an unfortunate accident where he lost a limb. And it, he was not happy with what had happened from the legal system. And he just used the city commission meetings to get out there and talk to citizens about being smart, about, about how to defend yourself in the public, you know, how to make sure that you're not taken advantage of. And, you know, it was uncomfortable because it was probably a 15- or 20-minute discussion, and it was, it got animated, not from my side, but from his because I think he was pretty upset. Something had recently happened, and I think it had to do with a member of his family. And so that's probably the toughest engagement that I've had with the citizen.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm next. Good morning.
Good morning.
Tell us about how you have engaged with community stakeholders in your current and your previous posts, community stakeholders.
Got it. You know, when you say stakeholders, you know, there's, you know, when you look at a definition of a stakeholder, it can be anybody who's affected or is responsible in the spectrum of something you're trying to do. You know, it could be somebody that is a fellow spirit that you're looking to work with to implement something. It could be, you could have a change in your billing system for your water, for your water rates, and, you know, a stakeholder is going to be somebody who's the recipient of the bill, or it could be the company that is helping to implement that. How, I find the best way to work with stakeholders is kind of to have an open-hand approach of, can we sit down and have a conversation? I engage with stakeholders basically in any forum. When I got to Great Falls in the deputy city manager position and when I was in Steamboat Springs and before that in my military career, I kind of had what was called an open-door policy. You know, and the open-door policy was like, if you needed something that we needed to talk about, you know, please come see me. But at the same time, I also reach out to people, such as our previous, the commission I worked for and work with now as city staff. Is, I ask them how they like to be communicated with. You know, not everybody has the same communication methods. Some people like emails. Some people like texts. Other people prefer face-to-face. So when you say stakeholders, I work with our downtown redevelopment group, you know, and there's a monthly meeting that they have. Attend the monthly meetings. During COVID, it was dialing in through in Teams meetings or Zoom meetings with them. So how I engage with folks is, it's, it doesn't matter how the engagement is done as long as the engagement is being completed. You know, because you want to work with stakeholders to figure out what is the best mutual proposition that can be reached for the betterment of the community.
Thank you. All right. How have you handled people who are difficult to get along with? And describe a situation in which you were effective in getting a difficult person to cooperate. Explain what you did that made the difference.
Thank you for the question. When I, when I think about a difficult person and a situation and how I handled it, you know, I had mentioned the airport manager that I had in Steamboat Springs previously. But another item that comes to mind is when I was in the military, I had a civilian who was, who worked with our command team. And they were working with us on trying to understand how we were going to be implementing what was called joint basing. So what joint basing is, is we were taking two separate military installations and forming their support structure into, to be supported by one base. So we were taking an Air Force base and an Army base and two different cultures and two different thought ideologies and processes and figuring out through a series of actions and plans which service could provide that support to both bases for the most economical means. So as we were doing this, we were working with individuals from Fort Eusis, the Army base, and from Langley Air Force Base, and we were bringing them together. There was an individual who's a civilian that I was working with, and I say civilian as a civil service. He worked for the federal government. He was what they call a GS. And the individual was adamant, an adamant proponent of the, the one service being able to provide, service as in branch of military service, being able to provide the service they were providing in the most economical means. And unfortunately, he didn't have good data or good information. And in a few of the meetings that we had, he got up and was publicly displaying his displeasure with how everything was not being done according to the most economical means and that the Air Force was trying to take over the Army. And so it got, it dissolved or devolved from a conversation where we're supposedly mutually working together to where we had an individual starting accusing people of one service or another where there's people in the room whom were on both services and where it started to divide the room. You know, so I confronted the individual and said that, you know, we needed to take a break. My boss and I took the individual outside. We took a 10-minute break in the middle of the meeting. And we brought him outside, and we talked to the individual brought him outside, and we talked to the individual, and just explained to them about the process and the procedures you go through to determine the economical benefit. You know, you, in the business plan and the analysis that each side was supposed to provide, the one that he had provided was not accurate. And we were able to point out in his, in his methodology where he was wrong. So we didn't want to do it in front of everybody else, but we did it in a one on one setting. And it took him about 10 minutes to calm down. And we finally got back into the room, and we were able to proceed with what we were doing. And in the end, fast tracking, you know, we were in, we ended up doing the joint base about three months early, saved about 15 or 17 million dollars. But that one episode sticks out in my head, because that gentleman was just, he just would not, did not want to hear anything. And even after showing him the facts and pointing the items out to him in his methodology, you know, he still was hesitant to understand and to agree. But in the end, he did, and it did work out.
Thank you.
I'm not sure how much responsibility you have currently for, for capital projects, but I'm going to ask you a capital projects question.
Okay.
Tell us about the steps that you have taken to get a capital project back on track when it was at risk of not being completed on, on time.
So I have a little story, if I could entertain you with that.
Sure.
So in the community of Great Falls, we had an auditorium. And our auditorium was our only indoor swimming facility. It was built over a, I'm trying to think of the right word here. It's not, it's not a creek. It's, well, it was built over running water in aquifer. And occasionally, the aquifer would change places and move, and it upset the concrete and the foundation within the auditorium. So we occasionally had leakage into the auditorium. And so we didn't have money within the capital improvement budget to actually fix it. So we just kind of, you know, patched it along and kept it going, because it was our only facility. Eventually, about six months after I had gotten to Great Falls, the facade on the front of the building fell off. So if you can picture about a 10 by 30 foot piece of just bricks, just falling off the front of the building, and, and that's when we just said, okay, we can't let people in here anymore. So we had to condemn, condemn the building. You know, that, that hurt for a lot of reasons, because it was the only indoor swimming facility, children used it for swimming lessons over the winter, and it was the only place for the swim team to practice. The high school did have a, a swimming pool, but it wasn't always available. So what we did was, I worked with a few of our departments, and we pursued getting a Department of Defense grant from, for, from them for $10 million to build a new aquatics and recreation facility. We have a recreation center within our town that's probably 50 years old. We haven't had the, the money to really keep the upkeep on it or anything, and we haven't had any capital improvements done to it. So it's just been deteriorating, deteriorating over time. And so that, that was becoming an eyesore. So we pursued the DOD grant in order to, to build the new aquatic center. And what we did at the same time was, we moved the recreation center from where it is currently, and we combined that to an aquatics and recreation center. After we applied for the grant, we went to, back to the public and to the commission, and said we wanted to use Park Maintenance District money in order to fund our match money for the grant, which was $10 million ourselves. So the community came up with $10 million, and the Department of Defense came up with $10 million. So when we did that, we put out an RFP, and we got an RFP back for it to be built, and then COVID hit. And so what happened when COVID hit, we had gotten the RFP in, but supply chains just kind of froze. And the project was at a stall state. Contractor that did pick up the project, we actually had worked with him and worked with him not only to, for manpower, but to solicit supplies and equipment and parts that we needed to start the in-ground construction, because we had a timeline with the Department of Defense that we needed to break ground within 90 days and make our first improvement. And if we didn't make our first improvement, then we couldn't keep the grant. And so we worked and devised a way to extend a waterline over to the project area. And it took a little bit of work. I worked with the Public Works Director very intimately to make sure that, you know, we were extending the waterline. It was appropriate. It met the requirements of the grant. We were checking with the federal agencies, the Department of Defense, that it would meet our intent for the 90 day requirement to break ground and to start performing on, on the facility. You know, that would meet the grant requirement. And so we had stalled for a bit because of COVID, but we did figure out a way to bring the project back online. And June 28th of this year, which is within our timeline to open before July, we are having our ribbon cutting on that project. And it's a $22 million facility. It's got an eight lane lap pool. It's got an aquatic side for children, an indoor slide, and it's got recreation, all types of recreation for adults and youth. And we open up before the end of the month. And getting the project back on track and working with the departments and being led from the Park and Rec Department to keep that project on track after was just, it was enjoyable to see that through. I can't wait to see the ribbon cutting.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Remaining calm under extreme pressure is a difficult skill for many people. Tell us about a situation where you were able to do so.
I'm sitting here right now, and my toes are going a mile a minute, because I'm trying to whittle off the excess energy. Yeah. Remaining calm under pressure. Wow. That's a great question. In my former career, when I was in the military, I had deployed to the Philippines, or actually, okay, I was, I went to the Philippines, because while there was operations going on in the Middle East, over in, in sections of the Middle East, there's also operations that were going on in the Pacific Peninsula. The Philippines being an area where there was insurgents who were acting out against certain religious groups. And the unit that I was attached to at the time was, was tasked to deploy some forces to an ongoing operation. And when I hit the ground down there, and, you know, we, we went in by airplane to a private airfield. But when I got there, an individual approached the gate and pulled out a nine millimeter gun and started shooting at people. And so at first, I didn't understand what was going on. And then I was like, oh my gunfire, you know, we got to take cover, took cover. And thank goodness, the people I were with were much more experienced than I was, you know, at dealing with those types of situations. They had been specifically trained for that. You know, where I wasn't, I was a communications guy. I was an IT guy, radio guy, and, you know, these were, you know, special forces and Greenberry gentlemen that I was working with. And, you know, trying to assess the situation and listen to what they were telling me and keep composure, you know, was pretty difficult initially. And, you know, we didn't have that happen again there at that location, but on another deployment that had happened at a front gate, again, at a different location in the Middle East, you know, a few years apart from that. And but what had happened previously had kicked back in. And I, and I just remember some of the words that the gentleman told me and gave me the guidance as this was going on. So thank you for the question.
Thank you.
I think this is one of those combined questions. I'll give it, I'll give it my best shot.
Sixty, you're good.
A sixty? Okay.
As it is.
Shaw, tell us how you've involved subordinates in planning, decision making, facilitating and process improvement. And if you could give a specific example, please.
Sure, Ken. So when I was in Steamboat Springs, Colorado, and I apologize, I might have told one of the commissioners this story already. What I had been involved in, so I was the Public Works Director there. And I oversaw the city engineer's office and the engineers. And there was a section of our, our main street downtown was a state highway, US 40. And one block over from our main street of US 40 was Yampa Street. And Yampa Street was adjacent to the Yampa River, which was one of the, you know, the treasure prizes within Steamboat Springs, Colorado. And it's used for world-class trout fishing, kayaking, recreation. So, but the community is very sensitive to any impact on water quality. And as is all of Colorado, but it's very particular there in that stretch around Steamboat Springs because of the fishing capability, but also because of the recreation that can be had. So there was an old plan that had come up for revitalizing Yampa Street. And Yampa Street was kind of a mix of established older businesses that, you know, didn't always have, wasn't always open every single day, but it had been community members that had been part of the community for their entire lives. And so they had been there for years and years and years. And there was a growing requirement and desire to develop that area to enhance it. So I worked with the city engineer, his name was Ben Bell. And Ben and I worked with Kelly Heaney, who was our water resource manager. And we started doing outreach with some of the development groups, developers in particular, and the business owners down on Yampa Street, because we talked to them and showed them the vision that had been, come up with previously, and we had updated on turning Yampa Street into a destination area. You know, US 40 was very crowded. There was no room for any more growth there. So we had to start looking to the ancillary streets to where we could grow. And there was a growing desire for new restaurants and new businesses, breweries, and other, and other items such as that. And so we went down and we met with the, the business owners that were there, down along Yampa Street. And we talked to them and showed them what the vision could be. And there was hesitancy with the individuals, because they've lived there their entire lives. You know, they've run their businesses for 30 years or had something handed down from, you know, one generation to the next. And they thought, when you heard about updating and, you know, changing it, it was to abolish and get rid of them, and it wasn't. It was more like, how do we talk to you about integrating what you have into what we can do in the future? And if there's the opportunity, you know, maybe you could do something to enhance your business, and it'll make it better. Yeah. So we had worked together, and Ben, Ben and I, and Kelly, and we met probably in the course of about a year and a half, with different groups of developers, with business leaders. We worked with the city manager, and they put up the fire station that was down on Yampa Street. They wanted to consolidate and move to a different area and to have a public safety building. And so they were looking to sell the fire station. And we got an individual who was with Kona Brewing, or previously with Kona Brewing, to come down, and he opened up a brewery down on Yampa Street. And that jumpstarted the, the cascading effect of people going out and wanting to bring businesses down there. The city participated by building a promenade, having water access, but making sure we worked with the state to make sure the water access was safe, and it was regulated. We had a small amphitheater that was there, and we started attracting restaurants. And I think I was able to be part of it, but I was working with a team of folks that I had worked with in the engineering department and in the planning department, in finance, with our finance director and some other subordinates, you know, to figure out how we could make some of these things happen, you know, using some of the sales tax money and the revenue that we had received to incentivize some of that development down on Yampa Street.
Thank you.
All right. So you, I'm going to take the next one. You already talked to us about a situation where you had to give some difficult feedback to one of your subordinates or direct reports. But can you give us an example of a time when you were given constructive feedback and how you responded to that situation?
Again. Many years ago, early on in my Air Force career, I was, I was not always the most stellar airman. I was a young youth. And as a young youth, I was stationed overseas in England. And I was with a crowd of friends that we were out regularly in the evening. And what had happened was, I had a, had the occasion of being late to work for about three days in a row. And what had happened was, I had a supervisor whose name was Tech Sergeant Doug Casey. And I can still remember this to this day. And, you know, I came into work, and I had gone to bed late that night. I had probably stayed out too late, enjoyed myself too much that evening. And when I went into work, I wasn't in the, the best working condition. I was not entirely coherent. You know, and this, this was many, many moons ago, when I was a single young man. And I need to make sure I caveat that in there. And, and so my boss, Doug, took me outside and said, I need to talk to you in the hallway. And so he brought me outside, and he said, you stink like beer. You stink like beer, your eyes are bloodshot. And he shoved me up against the wall. And he said, this is your only pass. Don't ever do this again. He said, you can have a great career. You're a smart kid. Don't be stupid with yourself. And I listened. I listened to his advice. You know, unfortunately, I don't stay in touch with Doug. He had passed away a few years ago. But it was early on. It was, it was my first duty station. And, you know, I remember that to this day. I can still remember where we were in the hallway, up against the wall. It was his left arm underneath my chin. And, you know, and he just, he told me, and gave me some good advice about, don't waste your time. This is an opportunity for you, and take advantage of the opportunity, and don't be stupid. You know, be young, but be responsible.
Great. Thank you. We'll go back to your question.
We can all chuckle at that one. Please provide some examples, I think that's what we're on. Please provide some examples of how you have targeted developers and businesses to drive economic development.
And I'm going to tack on a little bit to that. And if you could, please, go into a little bit of how you would utilize those strategies with our unique development opportunities here in Treasure Island, including our downtown area, John's Pass, the club, some of the places that you've already identified. And I know you talked about Yampa Street already, so I know that that's your kind of really good development experience. But if you can dive in specifically on how you like targeted those developers and businesses and really form those connections, that'd be great.
Okay.
I could just slide in. You're at about 45 minutes. Let you know you're about halfway in.
Thank you for the question. You know, targeting developers, and I'll go back to Steamboat Springs, and I won't go right into the Yampa Street, but I will follow up with that at the end. Oftentimes, you will find in municipal operations that developers are leery of, you know, making the investment, primarily because of the infrastructure costs. You know, the infrastructure is, can be quite expensive, when you talk about putting in roads, you know, street widths, sewer, water, stormwater, the requirements that go with that. So being able to, you know, take an area and provide some of those infrastructure improvements and use a targeted development methodology, you know, that is very assistful. In Steamboat Springs, Colorado, I came in to an initiative that was, had been started but not completed. And what it was, was it was roadway improvements. There was an area that was being looked at for development for single-family homes, which is something that there's not enough of within Steamboat Springs, Colorado. And back in the time in 2012, 2013, you know, there were a number of developers who wanted to have access to properties so that they could go in there and build subdivisions. But the cost of the infrastructure was too great. So in Steamboat Springs, what we did is, we had a CIP first type methodology when we went to our annual budget. So it's a sales tax driven economy there, primarily. You still do, do, there's small property taxes. Now, there wasn't property taxes previously within the city level at this, at the state there was, but not at the city level, which there are now. So we survived on sales tax. So we would take that CIP first and take the first million dollars that we had in revenue, and that went into the CIP projects. So I worked with the engineers to develop a plan to target development to this particular area where they could build subdivisions. And we put the infrastructure in there. We, we collaborated with some of the local construction companies, and we talked to them about doing roadway improvements and agreements with individuals that would come in there. And eventually, after they would build the subdivision, some of the costs would be passed on to the homeowner. So there was a reimbursement clause that went back to the city, and a reimbursement clause that went back to the, the contractor, or excuse me, the developer that did the subdivision. When we, when migrating over to Yampa Street, when you were asking in particular about how did we target those individuals, quite honestly, a lot of it happened through Ben Bell. Ben, who was the city engineer, was born and raised there, and he knew the community. I was somewhat newer to the community, because I hadn't been involved. I had been through Steamboat before, but hadn't lived there like Ben had. And Ben and the planning director, Tyler, and I were able to figure out who the key players were in Yampa Street, and who were the hesitant folks who would thought with the right incentive that we could get them to develop down there along Yampa Street. And when the city started doing some improvements, like we built the promenade, and we put in permanent lighting overhead for nighttime activities. We put in, you know, bike paths and, you know, dedicated lanes, and the ability to close the area off, so you could have, you know, five and six blocks of street parties or farmers markets. We put the city making the investment first, showing the developers, you know, that we were committed to making this happen. You know, and we would show them everything from, this is what our plans were, this is what we were looking to implement. You know, we took input from them. You know, again, I said before, I'm not the smartest guy in the room, and we understood that, you know, people may have a vision on how they would like to see things. And I'd rather come to an agreement with somebody on a shared vision than just go in and do what you think is right. Because if you can make both parties happy, you know, you're going to win in the end. You know, here You know, here in the community in Treasure Island, you know, when you talk about the clock tower in John's Pass, I think it's part of reaching out to the owners of those areas, which I think that the city is potentially in the process of, you know, and figuring out, you know, what is it gonna take to, you know, bring them to the table to have a good understanding of what they're looking for. I'd heard a little bit of discussion about, they were just looking for the city to vacate it right away, you know, but without providing any substance on what they're looking to do, but just having them understand, we're not looking to say no to this, it's just help us to get to yes. You know, and how do you do that? Describe what you're looking to do here, because there may be a way for the city to partner, whether through grant opportunities or other, you know, to partner to make whatever they're proposing to do that much better.
Great, thank you. I'll let you go.
This is another one of those, I'm not sure how much ability you've had to experience this, but what hands-on experience do you have, or have you had, with police and fire departments? What was the biggest oversight issue, if I can ask?
Is that on the evening end, from the police department, or?
Just the interaction.
I'm joking, I was just...
I was gonna say...
It was a bad joke, it was a bad joke. You know, actually, I work very closely with our police chief and our fire chief, and I have here in Gray Falls, Montana, and also back in Steamboat Springs, Colorado. They're partners, they're partners as part of the management team at both locations. I've worked very well with our current and past chief in Gray Falls, Montana, especially right now, we're working through, we're having a recruitment issue, where we're just not getting enough applicants for the police department. You know, the fire department, they always have applicants, you know, amazingly, there's always, now, not as many as they used to get, where they used to get, you know, maybe a hundred per position, now they're maybe only getting ten or fifteen per position. But the police department is going through a difficult time with retaining their officers and attracting officers. So, I'm working with the police chief right now, we developed and found a software that they want to use to communicate with applicants. What we were finding before previously is like, when an applicant would put in a package, you know, it's a long process in order to, from initial contact, in order to get them, you know, into an academy class, position seat, and it takes a lot of touchpoints in being able to communicate with them. They had an incident where an individual tried to call the police department recruiter and to talk to them about a position, and it's kind of a part-time job for the lieutenant, and he's a recruiter, but nobody answered him back because the lieutenant was on vacation. And so he didn't hear back from anybody for about four or five days, and when they finally did contact him back, he had already been picked up by another agency. So, we had lost a person. So, I worked with the police chief, and we found a software, and it's an app actually that we can use, and he can use, to stay in touch with his applicants. It's on their smartphone, it gives them instant access to not only the recruiter, but the recruiter designates three other people, and the other three people, if the recruiter's not around, can respond back and answer the individual's question, because we're finding the more constant contact and up-to-date and responsiveness that we're providing is helping with attracting people to come in. The fire department, on the other hand, you know, it's a bunch of good folks there. I work with the police, or excuse me, with the fire chief, we were finding, and it was to no surprise to anybody who's involved there, that, you know, you're getting more emergency medical calls than you are for fire calls to the fire department. You know, there is more need, or more occasion of a need for a paramedic or an EMT versus a firefighter. And I'm not saying anything negative about either side of it, but you need that firefighter paramedic now, and that is more and more prevalent. I know we have, according to data, about seventy-eight to eighty-two percent of all our calls are medically related. So, we didn't have enough paramedics within the fire department. So, I worked with the fire chief, and we approached the school president of Gray Falls College MSU, which is a two-year degree school in Gray Falls, and we asked them to develop a paramedic program. What we did is, we identified ten individuals that were currently on staff, and we figured out a way to adjust schedules and, you know, boost the overtime for the other individuals that are in the department, so these nine or ten folks could go out and could go to paramedic school there in the community as part of their duties. At the end of the program, you know, we had ten more paramedics. It's included now, how many people can be paramedics in a collective bargaining agreement, because we wrote it into the agreement, to make sure that it's an ongoing program, because it's not something we want to start and then people retire or transfer somewhere else. We also incentivized the people by, if they were allowed to go to the paramedic program, if they were to leave after a year, they were gonna repay us eighty percent of what we committed to pay for them to be a paramedic. After two years, it was sixty percent, so it was a declining number, but it was an incentive, knowing that they could get paramedic trained and paramedic pay when they completed the program, if they would participate. And I do work with our police chief and fire chief on a number of venues, you know, positive and on an occasion, negative too.
Great, thank you.
Brady, tell us about a time when you were able to remain objective and open to another viewpoint when you did not agree with it.
In my current organization, there's a gentleman who works in HR, and he's a part-time employee within HR, and he's a gift, actually, to our city. He is a, what you would call a training and development coordinator. And so what this individual does is, he figures out and keeps a pulse on the organization to see where, what type of training is needed, and he provides training out to everyone across the city, depending upon what the request is, more from the leadership-management perspective. So, he does a first-time supervisor class, he does a difficult conversation forum. We've partnered together on how to do evaluations and accountability of people. So, we were putting together a workshop between the two of us, and, you know, looking at trying to implement the workshop, and part of what Mark had seen, I used his name, okay, so, part of what Mark had seen was that there was a great need in the department for a specific type of training, you know, and so when we were talking about it, I didn't think that they really needed the training as much, and so Mark and I were disagreeing, and we were working at building the agenda and how we were gonna perform and hold the class, and, you know, what the requirements would be to get there, and what we're looking for is the end product, and, you know, we just, we disagreed on it, and, you know, through discussion, you know, I realized Mark had a better grasp on what was going on internally within the department, a couple layers down, not just at a supervisor level, but a couple of people below the supervisor, and there was some wants and needs that the people had had, that they had expressed to him on a personal level, that he was bringing into the conversation, I wasn't aware of, and I wanted to take the training class in a different direction, and he convinced me otherwise, and he was right in the end. Yeah, and it worked out, and to the benefit of the employees. You know, when I didn't agree, you know, I didn't dig my heels in or anything like that, you know, I challenged him on it, and I said, "Well, why? Convince me." It doesn't mean I can't be convinced, but, you know, help me get there." And he did, and he got me there, so, thank you.
As you know, I'm sure the city manager is responsible for juggling numerous projects and initiatives simultaneously. Tell us about how you manage multiple projects and communicating progress updates to the appropriate people, and the specific procedures you use to keep everyone abreast of the project schedules. If you want me to repeat any of that, I will.
If you wouldn't mind, yes, thank you.
As you know, the city manager is responsible for juggling numerous projects and initiatives simultaneously. How do you manage multiple projects and communicate progress updates?
And you're right, I think as a city manager, and I think in many positions within leadership, you're tasked and asked to juggle multiple items at once. And me personally, how I look at those things is, if you're gonna be a city manager, or you're gonna be a department head, or somebody who's gonna be in charge, you have to be fairly good at delegation. You know, you have to figure out how you can delegate items that can be accomplished by other people. You know, if you try to do everything yourself, I think you would completely fall behind, and unfortunately, you may fail in some endeavors, you know. And there's a reason that you work not on your own, but with a team, because, you know, teamwork is very, very important, you know, and if that means delegating to your team on projects, you know, if you've got two or three things going on, or four, or five, or ten, you know, you find the appropriate items that you can delegate to folks. When you're delegating to people, you're giving them the opportunity to learn, the opportunity to be successful, and the opportunity to grow. But even when you delegate, you still have to keep track of what's going on with that project, because you want to make sure that if there's missteps, and they happen on occasion, and that's okay, people are allowed to make mistakes, you know, let the missteps happen, but make sure you correct your course, and make sure that, you know, you get back on track to where you need to be. From the communication side, I know I meet weekly with department heads currently in my position right now, and then I've got the department I'm over with my division heads, and so I work communicating with them, and we have a weekly schedule that we go over, you know, hot items that are, you know, that we talked about last week, something that popped up on the radar, a little bit more of your long-term goals, and we do that on a weekly basis. I use that same methodology when I'm communicating on projects, you know, depending upon the stage of where you are in the project, initiating, executing, you know, controlling it or closing, you know, using that same methodology, I pull the pieces out of the projects that are going on, and I do report that and communicate that up to my boss, who's the city manager, and also to the city commission. So, primarily, I'll do a lot of work via email. On occasion, if something pops up, or a commissioner pops in, I'll give them an update and then follow it up in writing, just so they have something in writing, and just so there is a record of it, you know, and then I ask the people that I do delegate to, you know, to keep me appraised of things, and while it's good to get stuff in verbal, I do like follow-up in writing, because then it solidifies the action has been taken, and there's a good record for it.
Thank you.
That's good.
Thank you.
One more. Tell us how you may have or would help a divided governing body to achieve consensus on a politically divisive issue.
And I don't want to start out with this, but I think I'll just say it, but, it's the communication aspect and the collaboration piece. You know, oftentimes, you will find a governing body that, you know, there's split decisions or dissension about an item that is, that has come up. And commissioner, if I'm reading what you were saying correctly, you know, how do you advise? You know, I would go back to my experience, you know, and depended upon the subject that was coming up, you know, and ask the commission to look at it from both sides, you know, to say that, "There's a politically hot, sensitive subject that you have here, but I'd ask you to take a step back." And I'd say, "Taking a look at this from the other side, or from a different lens, you know, what do you think would be best for the community in the end?" Because you could be talking about a project having to do with development, you could be talking about an initiative that maybe there has been a significant amount of staff time invested already, and you're trying to decide whether to continue on with a project or not continue on with a project, or you might have a group that is vocal within your community, and that community group is just, you know, I don't, I'm not gonna use the word pounding, but they're incessant upon contributing their thoughts and speaking up about how they feel on a subject. And I bring that back to that communication piece, because having an understanding with a group, whether they are pro or against something, is an understanding you want to have within your job jar when you're taking a look at something objectively, you know, and in the end, sometimes, you know, the commission does have to make a hard decision. You know, you're the elected body, and I'm not saying that this is you, but, you know, at times where you will have to just, you know, step back and take a look at it and make a decision, that just may not be entirely popular. But if it's for the betterment of the community, and it will advance and make things better, then that's how I would advise the commission, to do the right thing in the end.
Just a few more. How do you feel about receiving voicemails and emails from the mayor and city commission after normal working hours? Are you ever off limits?
Always off limits, no. Never, that's part about the J O B. That just comes with being a city manager. You know, not against emails, texts, phone calls. If it's important enough for you to want to pass something on, it's important enough for me to listen, and for me to know it, and because you're taking the time to make sure I do know it, you know, and it could be somebody who is, you know, "Hey, tomorrow, could you check, somebody illegally parked here and they're blocking this, and we can't pick up at the sanitation?" Or it could be something that's a much more critical issue that I need to know that night, because tomorrow morning, when I walk into it, I'm gonna walk into, you know, that issue right there, and it's gonna be facing me as soon as I get into the office. So, no, I'm not against that at all. I would just prefer to understand your communication methods, you know, what do you prefer? Is it face-to-face, email, text, or is it all of the above?
Perfect, thank you.
I think this one goes directly at the commission. How do you effectively handle having so many bosses who may sometimes have differing goals and agendas?
You work with them. You work with bosses, you know. People are fortunate when they have one boss, but, you know, sometimes it's not so fortunate. You know, when you have multiple bosses, you know, you get multiple perspectives, you get multiple ideals. Oftentimes, you may just get one ideal, or you may get one path and direction. It's okay to disagree, you know, corporately among yourselves, or to disagree with the city manager, or the city manager to disagree. It needs to be done respectively, from the city manager to the commission, without a doubt that has to happen like that. But I think it's, you know, being able to reach out and have a discussion, to have the comfort level and trust that, you know, what I'm working to do is the commission's direction on what you want done, but to also communicate perspectives. If I hear that, you know, there's three members of the commission that want to do something, and, you know, they want to make the right turn at the fork in the road, and two want to make the left, and, you know, it's my responsibility to be able to balance that piece out, and to give the best advice as possible to people who want to go right or want to go left.
Great, thank you.
If you are appointed as Treasure Island's successor city manager, what would you like to be remembered for in your previous post?
I'll take an easy way out of it and use a blanket statement that I could walk away knowing that when I leave, the place I'm leaving is in better shape than when I got there. And I know that I've worked very hard for the last seven and a half years with department heads, staff, on initiatives, whether it's our downtown group, the redevelopment in our downtown is light-years ahead of where it was from ten years ago. You know, there's more boutiques and shops opening up on our main street, you know, that has, that's been heavy lifting done from our planning and community development department, but also our finance department and working through incentives using TIF districts in order to encourage that, you know, changing some of our verbiage in TIFs and what TIFs can be used for, you know, and it's allowable under the municipal code up in Montana, but, you know, changing so you can include life safety things in there, so it opens up the availability of funds that can be used from local businesses for, you know, sprinkler systems, facade improvements, street enhancements, you know, things that they weren't able to achieve before. And there's been so much change in the downtown, and knowing where it was seven and ten years ago to where it is now, you know, is just so much better. From the people's side, I know I've worked to hire ten or eleven directors, new police chief, new fire chief, and that's in the course of the seven years. And watching that team come together, and knowing that it's a better team than when I arrived, you know, that brings a lot of satisfaction. June twenty-eighth, when we have that ribbon cutting, I'm gonna be jumping up and down. June 28th, when we have that ribbon cutting, I'm going to be jumping up and down, you know, because it'll be an achievement that, you know, and it's, the community deserves it. You know, they deserve to have a great world-class facility, or a first-class facility like that, and it's something that they do deserve. And so when we cut that ribbon on the 28th, there's going to be a lot of pleasure in that, yeah, and happiness.
Thank you. All right, one more that we missed along the way. So coming into an organization that is already well-established, we have a great group of department heads and directors, can you tell us about a time when you were new to a job, or if you don't have a specific experience, just kind of tell us, what steps would you take to build trust with your coworkers and staff?
If I can entertain a little story. So when I arrived to Steamboat Springs, Cal, and I was appointed as the public works director, it was an internal candidate who was the city engineer. Her name was Janet Ruby. And Janet was the dark horse who should have been the next public works director. But what had happened was, the city manager, against the advisement of his staff, selected me, because he didn't think that Janet was ready to do that position, and he wanted to bring in somebody who had a different perspective. What that provided for me was a little bit of a challenge, because as I was going through the interview process, and after I learned, and I got on the ground after, and I met Janet during the interview process, and she's a, she's a great woman, a great person, and a phenomenal engineer. It provided a little bit of a challenge for me, because it wasn't a very receiving department head team initially, and I had to go through some lengths, and not, not bad lengths or anything like that, but extra steps to try and assure the other department heads that I would work with them on whatever our goals and mission was for the city, and that although Janet was not selected, that I still wanted and appreciated having her on the staff. Janet ended up leaving about, you know, a month or two later. So she did depart, and she went to another location, but trying to integrate with that department head team was a little bit difficult at first. There was a few people that, it didn't bother them that Janet didn't get picked, but the majority of them, they didn't hold a grudge or anything like that, but they very much thought that Janet should have been selected. And unfortunately, about a month, maybe two months after I was hired, the city manager left also. So that made it a little bit more difficult, as the deputy city manager was put into the city manager position on a temporary basis, and the deputy city manager was, had thought that Janet should have the job also. And so she was then the city manager, and, you know, and I was the new public works director. So integrating with the department heads and the manager, and my new supervisor, it took some effort, but it was worth the effort to do, because I wanted to prove to them that I was a team player, that I wasn't the engineer that Janet was, but I brought a perspective that I think that they would appreciate, and I know years later that, you know, I heard back from them that they did appreciate, you know, that they were happy that I was there, and it didn't take years to get there, but you know, they were happy that I was there, and they appreciated everything that I did from a teamwork perspective and a leadership perspective.
Great. Thank you. All right, that concludes our questions, and we do want to leave a little bit of time for you. We have about seven minutes left. What's up?
Timing worked out. We actually started a little late, so we're at about 1:13, an hour 13, and we, so you've got about 15, 17 minutes left for questions, as well as any closing comments if need be. So, okay?
Sounds good. So if you have any questions for us, we've asked you a lot, but you also probably have some questions that you may have about the city that we can answer for you. So if you have anything, now's the time.
Okay. For the next city manager to be successful, could you tell me three things that you think that they should have for attributes?
I need to take a go at it? Go ahead.
Open to input.
Open to input.
I would like to see just open channels of communication, and enhanced communication.
Well, clearly, and we've talked about this already, but handling multiple projects simultaneously, and keeping them on track and on schedule.
The juggling, right? Could I ask you what you see on a timeline, on what you think the next city manager, when they would possibly be appointed to their position, or could you talk to that a little bit?
Well, do you want to, do you have attribute? Maybe we can each give one. You asked for three, but maybe we'll just give you five.
Yeah, I'll take five.
Yeah, I think that, you know, what we're looking at right now here is an opportunity for redevelopment. There is very large swaths of property that don't have anything on them today, or they're well underutilized. And I think that although we've worked hard, I mean, as commission and as the city managers and everybody else, to get something put together, you know, I basically, yesterday, I think I said, when we talked a little bit about this, that what we need to do is, if I could do it, get the two parties into the room, and lock the door, and don't unlock the door, kick the key out, you know, and figure out how you're going to be able to negotiate what is a good deal for the city and a good deal for the property owner. So I think a lot of it is negotiation skills, and being able to understand what other people are saying, but to stand firm on what needs to be done.
Yeah, and mine piggybacks right off of that, I think, when it comes to that, and a lot of other tasks around the city, whether it be capital projects, or anything else, community initiatives, initiative to actually get the job done, and persistence. So in particular, with a development situation, taking the initiative to make those personal connections, and as the leader of our organization, making sure that we are consistently communicating with them, and not just relying on people coming to us and being reactive, we need to be proactive and take that initiative.
Thank you.
Yeah. As far as timeline, we'll be making that, making our decision here today at the end of our meeting. So I would assume we will, and that might be a more procedural question for Doug or Gary, but we'll, right after we make the selection, I believe the commission will be appointing one of us to kind of handle the contractual negotiations, but, I mean, Gary's here interim, I know he only wanted to be here a few months, he's done his duty as city manager, so I think that the sooner the better for us. So as soon as the candidate is able to, that'll be part of the negotiation, and we will, yeah, we'd love to have it as fast as possible. Did I answer the question?
You did. Thank you very much. So, if I can, individually, if you could take one person, an FTE, where would you put that FTE in which department, and why?
That's a good question.
I'll start. I think adding an FTE to public relations would probably behoove everybody all the way around that can interact communications from the city manager's office to us, to our constituents, to keep us all, there's a lot to do with overall picture, but then the close, one-to-one basis of a step in between would be very helpful.
I don't know how popular this will be, but I would say code enforcement. And I think that basically, code enforcement begins with the city. You know, I think that, you know, when you take a look around, we see a lot of open property that's ready for redevelopment, but weeds are growing, trash is picking, you know, trash gets out there, we have a lot of good folks that are picking it all up on a daily basis. But we need to show our, you know, when, I'll go back to COVID, this is probably about it, in 2020, people just stopped doing maintenance, or at least, that's my opinion. And today's idea of maintenance is basically, you know, you either painted something, or you mowed something. And that's kind of the idea of maintenance, and I think that it's all the way around. It's everybody, you know, that isn't doing enough to make the city and keep the city as beautiful as it can possibly be. So, you know, if I take a look at it, I think I'd say, give us a code enforcement, another code enforcement person. I think the ones that are there, they're doing a great job, but they're overworked. And I think that if we're going to make us a first-class city, or a better than the first-class city, you know, is basically to make sure that everybody is doing their part, whether it be the businesses, the residents, or the city itself.
Thank you.
Either one?
Yeah, I would add somebody to permitting, community development permitting. When the terrain modification module, when all of the components of that get passed, I think it's going to open a floodgate into people wanting to finally put the finishing touches on their projects, and apply to the city for permits. So that's where I'd put the person.
Sounds like we're going to need more than one FTE here, but I would put the FTE with the police department, and have that FTE dedicated specifically for beach patrol, in particular on the weekends and the holidays and stuff. We do, the police department does as good a job as they can with the staff they have, but if we were able to dedicate somebody specifically for beach patrol, I think there'd be big benefits derived from that.
Thank you.
For me, it's definitely somebody in our community development department, and it's kind of a tie between, I think someone else for code enforcement, we have a big issue with short-term rentals, and there's some state issues there that go along with that, and what we can and can't do, but in an ideal world, being able to have an FTE designated to tracking those short-term rentals, creating a program, helping them be in compliance, and making sure that we don't have people breaking our rules. And then also, the one that Commissioner Manning identified, just someone in generic in that department to help with just customer service, and being really focusing on how do we work with people, as we have a lot of things that are probably going to be coming in, a lot of seawalls being done as we change some of our ordinances, having somebody that can really help the customer with walking through all that.
Thank you.
Good question.
Being a new city manager in Treasure Island, and not having the background and experience here for the local community, or a greater community, can you tell me, or provide some input, if you were to make a suggestion, who would you recommend that the next city manager reach out to, not so much internally here within the city, but externally, as in for, to develop a partnership, whether it's a certain entity with, within the county, with, it's in a sister city, or something along those lines? Is there any recommendations that you would make? And I would just ask if, one each, please.
Anyone?
City Managers Association would be a good place to start, and might also take advantage of reaching out to, specifically to the mayors in our adjacent communities, although maybe currently, that's not a great idea.
Insult, maybe.
Sorry, I didn't mean to be derogatory in that, but there are, what, nine coastal communities? And reach out to the mayors of those on a one-on-one basis, and get a feeling for what they, how they manage.
There's a new, this is not the only person I would recommend, but there's a new city manager who's from out of state, from California, just been hired in St. Pete Beach, and she's just started, so she might be a good person for somebody coming in two or three months from now to reach out to, to see what, you know, what she's done to expedite her learning process about the state and the local issues. But I would agree with Commissioner Manning on getting in contact with the locals, well, not the local, but the city managers associations and stuff like that here.
We have 24 municipalities in Pinellas County, so most of them have city managers, so they definitely, they have a really good, I don't know that they have anything formal, but they have really good relationships just in Pinellas County, so forming some relationships with them and creating those bonds would be good.
Yeah, we have two Chamber of Commerces that basically take care of the beaches and our local community. I think that both of those would be a great place to start, especially because we're talking a lot about businesses, and we're talking about redevelopment, we're talking about bringing in the right businesses, and I think that both, the two leaders of those organizations are great resources, and can bring a lot of life in if we allow them to do so.
Commissioner, if I could follow up on that, I thought there's a Chamber of Commerce for TIMB for Treasure Island, and is it Madera Beach?
Yeah.
The other one is the Tampa Bay Beaches Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
So Tampa Bay Beaches, their headquarters is in St. Pete Beach, but they represent all of the beaches, and then we have a more narrowly focused one for Treasure Island and Madera Beach.
Thanks.
Kind of a unique situation.
Well, since we've covered the mayors, I would consider also including the county commissioners, and we're very fortunate to have one of the county commissioners that's a resident of Treasure Island. So that person could really provide a unique insight on fundings that might be available and different things that's been coming down the pipe through the county, too, for us.
About two, we have, at the county as well, Kelly Levy is in charge of, I believe, Public Works, but she's really the main contact person on beach nourishment, and that's a really big problem that we're facing, and an ongoing thing that we're fighting for. So having a good relationship with her, and being able to press them at the county. And then also Forward Pinellas is our local MPO, and Whit Blanton there is a fantastic resource as well.
Said Forward Pinellas. Thank you.
And I know I've already spoke, but I will add, since I've had a little more time to think about it, the three previous city managers, I'm sure, would welcome you to reach out to them and get their input, because they gave a lot of their heart and soul to this city, and I'm sure they'd like to, like to see it continue to progress in the way that it has.
I'd probably have to put them on retainer if we could.
All right. Anything else?
No, I'm done. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other final questions from the commission that we may have missed?
No, I'd just say, I think that everybody would agree, thank you very much for taking the time to come join us, and to spend time with us, telling us about yourself.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I'd like to take the opportunity, if I may, for a moment, Mayor, just to show my appreciation. You know, it's not easy for a community to go through a change, and when you're changing in your leadership, you know, it's a major undertaking, and it's risky, and you're very fortunate to have Gary who can fill the gaps, you know, but you are looking for a next city manager. And I think that there's four highly qualified candidates that are here. I think you're in a very good position, because you have four qualified people to choose from, you're not stuck with one lone candidate standing, and that's all you've got, you know. But I do appreciate the time and the effort that went into the recruitment here. You have got a phenomenal staff. When I talked to Tia up the stairs this morning, because I got here at 8 o'clock, or 5 to 8, and I thought it was at 8 o'clock, and I was freaking out, and she told me, relax, it's 8:30. I mean, she had that same calm, customer demeanor, just, it's prevalent throughout the organization, and you get that from good leadership, from the city manager level, and you get that from good department head-level leadership. And the way that the department heads work together, I picked up on, yesterday, as I sat through the panels, they're very comfortable with each other, you know, they're very good with each other. You know, they're very good with each other, and it would be an honor to try and integrate and to work with them, because it would be a pleasure to try and move Treasure Island in the direction it wants to go, to help it achieve what it wants to achieve, what it desires to achieve, or maybe things that you may not even desire yet, but want to do in the future. And I would love to be part of that. So, and I want to say thank you to the community at the end. You know, last night, people who will provide perspective, you know, when we came out with Zoom meetings because of COVID, people didn't have to show up anymore at commission meetings, because they could just dial on in. So the people who participate, and they come in person, you know, they need an extra thank you, because it takes an effort to do that.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Yes, we built in a 15-minute, if you want to make that 10, to try to pick up some time, that's fine as well. I'm showing 10 after, so if you want to go 20 after.
Sounds good.
Have an opportunity to respond to your opening question, and use the game plan from there, and we'll go from there. So, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you. James, you're welcome.
Thanks. All right, welcome back to our special city commission meeting. We're here with our second candidate, James Slaton. And just to get started, you've had the opportunity to see Treasure Island firsthand for a few days, so can you tell us about your initial thoughts and first impressions? And then we'll let you get into your presentation.
Sure. So I love it even more. I get more of a community feel, being here and talking to the residents. I recognize there's more opportunity than what I had realized before, and I'm ready to get started. Thanks.
Perfect, thank you. So now we'll move into a presentation time for you. You all have 10 minutes to present on your, like, first-year game plan. So I see you have your presentation already ready and queued up, so we'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to present some challenges and opportunities. I'll be prepared to advance all of these initiatives within the first year. They're all big-ticket items. None of them will be complete in the first year. We may have elements of each one completed, but these are all long-term, big-ticket items. So challenges, here we go. Diversifying revenue streams, economic development, downtown redevelopment, transportation, mobility, and then our parks and open spaces here in Treasure Island. Diversifying revenue streams, this should also say maximizing existing revenue streams. And we'll do that through potentially expanding the city's economic base, pursuing opportunities for tax increment revenue sources, review of existing impact fees or creation of new ones, aggressively pursuing grants. I work with a grant consultant now, and so we have created a multi-year grant strategy. And I know what's in our CIP. We look at the grant opportunities available and match them up with our CIP in advance. We also respond to new grant opportunities, but I have a dedicated grant consultant that does that. And then a review of all of the city's business units that already generate revenue, and that could be anything from parking to even planning fees. Review of those business units and then determining if the funds and the revenue created are adequate. Economic development, I could not find where the city had a comprehensive economic development strategic plan. If not, the city should have one. The Florida Commerce is funding economic development strategic plans right now, so I've just completed one at zero cost to the city. They're also funding economic development-related projects, so I'm working with them on construction of a new internal road inside our airport. I did not see where the city offered any economic incentive programs. It's just something to consider. There are lots of options out there, and those range from tax abatement to impact fee mitigation. And if you have any, one of the things we'll talk about while the next bullet there is a community redevelopment agency. And so within that, you can even offer tax increment rebates if the city council so chose to. Downtown redevelopment, I feel like is an absolute, something your citizens want. Every citizen I spoke to, I believe it's an absolute must here in Treasure Island. So the process really starts with a visioning effort, with a robust public engagement. Next, conceptual design, and we're talking about hardscape improvements here, conceptual design, then engineering design and construction. And then finally, the focus will be activation, getting more people into your downtown and spending money. There's a lot of redevelopment that I think needs to occur, but I think the natural first place to start is Pirate Square, 107th and 108th Avenues. So the municipal service complex, I believe, is a, I know that some of those buildings are still occupied, providing public services. However, it's a great opportunity, in my view, for redevelopment. That's a natural gateway to me to get the boating community connected to your downtown. I think, you know, boaters have discretionary income. I just happen to be a boater, and I like to go visit towns. Stewart has done a great job with the Stewart, Florida. Their downtown's about a block away. They've got public boat docks, and the boaters can come, dock, spend the day shopping and dining in the downtown area. So I think that's a great opportunity, that, you know, some of the ideas are consolidating that parking to a garage structure, maybe looking at a public-private partnership for maybe even a multi-use parking structure with either, you know, parking and residential and retail. And then streetscape design, when you're building a downtown, you want people, number one, feel comfortable and safe. You want it to look beautiful. What you're really doing is creating outdoor rooms where people come, it's a destination, and they want to stay there, shop, go from business to business. So we're talking about, you know, design, bringing the buildings, you know, closer to the road, wide sidewalks for outdoor dining, narrow travel lanes. That's not going to work as well on 107th, but certainly 108th is a prime candidate for that. So you've got traffic calming, and enhanced pedestrian improvement, street trees landscaping, that type of thing. So you can bring the waterfront into the downtown, and visually, it'll all be branded, and it'll look like you're in a downtown. This picture here, this is example, everything I just described, so this is a project I have going on in downtown Lake Wales that I'm rebuilding right now, so all this concept I'm talking about. I just wanted to give you an idea of what that looks like in real life. You'll see a lot of street trees, Block Tower Gardens is in Lake Wales, so we're creating a city in our gardens. We're planting thousands of street trees all over the entire city, and we're installing rain gardens. We got grants. Now, this is a multimillion-dollar project, but we got several hundred thousand dollars in grants from DEP, because we're installing these rain gardens that will then filter the water runoff. So kind of the, one of the biggest opportunities I think you have here in Treasure Island is the establishment of a community redevelopment agency. And so I'm going to just, in a quick summary, what that is, it's a special taxing district that will enable the city to be able to capture some of the ad valorem tax revenue that should be going to Pinellas County, and then some of the cities and redirect them into a trust fund. So you can use that trust fund to fund your capital construction projects. And if you stack those with grants, you can get quite a bit done. It's going to take some time to build up that trust fund, because it's funded by the increment, the increase in the property values. But as soon as you establish that CRA area, it's going to open up some mechanisms. There's some legislation available for you to be able to add incentives like tax increment rebates to businesses. So even before you have that trust fund, there's an opportunity to provide incentives to businesses. There are firms out there that will help you with both the hardscape design and the activation piece of it, so they'll help you create a business plan. So there's, RMA is a company here in Florida, Dover Colan Partners, that could be pursued. So it's kind of turnkey. And I put business retention there. A lot of times what happens when you're really successful in building a downtown destination, the rents go up, and then a lot of your smaller mom and pops, then it becomes a problem, right? So you start to gentrify them. So then, you know, one of the opportunities is, well, do we want to, you know, provide subsidies for any of those types of businesses to make sure we keep them around a little bit longer. Parks and open spaces, there's, I know you have, so your staff's done a really good job. I have not reviewed the Parks and Recreation Plan, but you have one. Already, that's a great first step. So take this with a grain of salt, but you have limited green space here in the island. And so number one, every park should be beautiful. And then secondarily, you know, you should service as many residents with a parcel of land as you possibly can, because it's such a scarce resource here. So I picked the Community Center Park. Not everything has to be a multimillion-dollar project. You could take a park like this and simply just construct walking loop trails, street trees, update the site furnishings, landscaping, screening the parking with landscaping to buffer it. And they've done a great job of this in Asheville, actually, next to the river. They've got a waterfront park, and it's just trees and walking trails, and the families, the place is just crowded every single day. So that's just a simple, that's a fairly low-cost enhancement you can make to make this park a little bit more functional, while keeping it passive and green. And then finally, and you've done this, so again, good job, staff, transportation, mobility. I know you have a mobility plan. I also have not reviewed all of those elements, but I've been here to Treasure Island and walked. I came, you know, a few weeks back and just kind of walked around. There could and should be some improvements focused on toward moving human beings around and not vehicles, and you'll do that through, you know, construction of multimodal trails. There are grant resources out there as well, so the recreational trails program at the state level. The coordinator just happens to be from Lake Wales, so I've got one trail I've just completed construction on connecting our lakefront to our downtown using grant funds. And then I've got two more that are in design and engineering right now, both with RTP funds. And so the mobility plan, you're going to focus on public parking, even transit. And I know that you are all already doing that, and then it provides a basis and opportunity to create either a mobility fee or multimodal impact fee to help fund some of the transportation improvements. I know there's not a lot of new construction going on, so that may take some time to accrue those impact fees, but it'll certainly create that opportunity for you. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So we will move into our question-and-answer interview portion. You're welcome to sit or stand, whatever you want. We have a lot of questions.
I'll stand, thank you.
All right. So to just get us started, in doing your homework for these sessions, what have you learned about the city of Treasure Island and its organization that has surprised you?
How progressive the city's been and the staff. I mean, it really has surprised me, the level in which the city has been proactive in trying to move the city forward.
Do you tend to make decisions quickly and instinctively, or more slowly and methodically? Tell us about a time that you used your method and did not achieve the results you expected, and what happened?
So I'll do both, but I'll tell you, I like to get input from a lot of sources before. I don't mind making the decision, but I like to get a lot of different perspective, right? So I'm going to have blind spots, the things that I'm not going to see that others will, right? Primarily staff, elected officials, even the public. So I like to get perspective on a major decision. There have been times where we've made a decision. We had an issue with mobile car washing businesses in Lake Wells, and they weren't regulated. And we created, okay, let's create an ordinance and let's regulate this, right? And we did. We just went and we did it, got it executed, implemented, and it didn't go over well. So we had not engaged those businesses. And what happened was, through the regulation of the ordinance, it would have, and would cause hardship to them, right? So we tend to over-regulate a lot in predicting perceived problems in government. And so we actually, we went back and we actually pulled the local businesses together and said, okay, this is what we're really trying to accomplish. How can you help us get it accomplished through your feedback, so that we're not causing you undue harm? And then, so we moved a little too quickly, I think, on that. And then we came back and using their feedback and redrafted the ordinance.
Tell us about the most difficult citizen encounter you have experienced. How did you handle it?
Most difficult citizen encounter? So this will probably, all right, I'm going to use this one now. It'll probably be an answer for another question later, but, so I had about 150 of them at one time, right? It was probably the biggest mistake that I'd made, at least since I'd been city manager. And I had 150 people really, really mad at me and the staff. And, man, they made us look really bad. I was embarrassed. And that involved a long-range planning process that had not, I had not engaged them, the public, early on. And I mean, from the outset, right? So even from project kickoff, you've got to bring folks in and say, okay, this is what we're thinking about doing. How do you think we ought to get started? What direction do you think we should go in? And I had not done that, so by the time we had our first public workshop, and we, you know, we thought 30 people were going to show up and give us some feedback, and I had about 150. And they were mad. I mean, they were yelling mad. So what did I do about it? Okay, so what did I learn? Engage the public as early as possible. And so what we did was, I put a pause, and then we started all over again. We really started back from the beginning, and we engaged the public, and so that the outcome of that became our Lake Wells envisioned long-range plan. And we've won several awards for that because of our level of community engagement.
Thank you. Answered that question and also covered our next question, so I'm going to skip down to another question here. How have you handled people who are difficult to get along with? Describe a situation which you were effective in getting a difficult person to cooperate. Explain what you did to make the difference.
So I always try to understand where they're coming, number one, right? So I always try to put myself in their shoes. Why are they being difficult? A lot of times, if we're trying to get to the same place, if they're a good person, and we're trying to get to the same outcome, then differences in personality, none of that really matters. And the other thing that I'll say is, bring them in, make them part of the decision-making process, right? So co-opt them, bring them in, and a lot of times, that goes a long way in solving the problems.
Another one for you.
All right.
Tell us about a time you were new to a job, maybe this is going to go way back. What steps did you take to build trust with your coworkers and staff?
I mean, look, I just, you'll never see me deviate from who I am. You'll never see me say something inconsistent with who you think I am. I try to lead by example, and I'm consistent who I am, and I do what I say I'm going to do. And I think once people see that, then they begin to, it builds confidence and trust.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to dig in a little bit further on that question, because, and we had a good conversation about this yesterday in our one-on-one interview, but having been with the same organization for so long, which is very admirable, you may not have had experience like this coming into a brand-new team of people that you do not know at all. How do you plan, maybe not based on past experience, but how do you plan on coming in with a in with a very established team that all know each other, that function very well together? How do you plan on coming in? What will be your approach to earn their trust and collaboration with them?
Again, it's, I'll tell you this about trust. For me as a person, I just inherently, I trust people. I give trust until there's a reason not to. And again, I think people will see that, and I'm never going to, everything's transparent. It's out in the open. I do exactly what I say I'm going to do. And I think I will, my entire job really is about supporting the staff, supporting the staff, creating environment in which they can thrive. And I think what, once they see that and understand that I do it and I mean it, right? So how do I make them better, better than me, know more than I do, and then I focus on their development? It will build trust.
You can go with the next one since I kind of elaborate up here.
Tell us about the steps you've taken to get a capital project back on track when it was at risk of being, of not being completed on time, and give us an example.
Well, one of the things that we make sure we do is in our contract provisions, right? So in our contract provisions, you know, the project's got to be done within a certain timeline, and you put those provisions in there in which they'll be penalized and pay fees back to the city if the project's not completed by a certain timeline. So, I mean, that's one of the methods. That tends to work out pretty well. The other thing is, depending what the project is, right, particularly with engineering firms, they seem to take a long time. So you threaten to fire them, right? I mean, you do. If you've got it within your, they'll get it together. If you've got provisions from your contract that you can terminate for non-performance, that tends to help as well. And then you've got, you just got to be on top of the projects, right? So you got to be measuring, monitoring, and meeting, discussing this capital project on a regular basis.
Do you have an example of that happening, where you might have had a capital project that was running behind, that you had to get back on track?
So I'm going to say no, not within any, I'll say undesirable tolerances, right? I mean, sometimes things happen, and there's not a whole lot you can do about it. Until you get working and understanding, you know, what's underground, sometimes they just happen. And it tends to extend the timelines of the projects. But, you know, we've been pretty good about, I probably have $40 million in capital projects this year, and everything seems to be moving pretty well.
May I share a talk? Remaining calm under extreme pressure is a difficult skill for many people. Tell us about a situation where you were able to do this.
Every first and third Tuesday of the month.
Nice to hear we're on the same skid.
I was sincere. That's my.
I know.
Can you tell us about a specific situation that you've had to deal with staying calm?
Yeah, I have a lot. So we have a lot of growth in Lake Wales, a lot of growth, right? So we have over 40 separate development projects, some of them really large-scale in Lake Wales, and we got a lot of people that aren't interested. And so they don't like it. Our commissioners prove it. They're pretty pro-growth, responsible, pro-growth. And they will accuse the staff of, you know, working behind the scenes, you know, with developers, or, you know, we're working through the economic development incentive right now, so we're increasing and improving one of our development programs related to impact fees. And they will put out misinformation online about, you know, what it really means. They'll show up at the commission meetings and intentionally put out misinformation. You know, we have a large economic development project going on in Lake Wales, and it took us over a year, it was a year of delays. So we've got a manufacturing facility, advanced drainage system, constructing a $260 million facility. And they're one of, they're the largest recyclers of plastics in the entire nation. And there are pictures painted, you know, of the company poisoning people, and, you know, pictures of smoke stacks. They're a zero emissions company, by the way, but, so nuclear smoke stacks being brought to commission meetings. So those are a couple of examples, but I have several more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James, tell us how you have involved subordinates in planning, decision-making, facilitating, and process improvement, and please give us a specific example.
So I collaborate with staff often. Again, you know, I get multiple perspectives before we make an important decision, but as relates to planning and process improvement. So we created an internal consulting team in Lake Wales, so I've got about three lean Six Sigma Green Belts running around City Hall. So they're internal consulting team, and they'll do things, will meet with departments, and look at ways to increase efficiency and remove waste. And we've even created a performance management dashboard that's posted on our city's website because we have a lot of problems. I should have mentioned this during my presentation as it related to permitting, building permits and otherwise, but we track customer satisfaction, turnaround times, and we post that information, our public dashboard on our website. But we had an internal team that we formed. It was, we did it collaboratively, and we put a pretty good system in place.
Tell us about a time when someone gave you constructive feedback. How did you respond? What did you do with the information? And this is the second part of that. What approach have you taken to provide performance feedback to staff? Just a flip-flop of that. Number one, you got it. Number two, you're giving it to staff. Tell us about the most difficult feedback session you have had, and how you planned for it.
I don't mind feedback at all. I want to be the best at what I do, and if there's something that I don't see, I don't mind somebody pointing it out to me at all. I learn from just about every person that I interact with, so I don't take any offense to that whatsoever. Probably most difficult feedback, I think I got was from, you know, my predecessor, and that really had to do with probably moving too fast, you know, moving too fast on trying to get things accomplished. That was kind of hard for me here, because I was proud of it. I'm like, man, I'm the one that takes the initiative and gets this work done. So that kind of hurt me a little bit, but, you know, I did take his advice, and we kind of slowed down and got a better products, you know, in the end by including and involving more folks. And then.
Was there another part of that question?
Yeah.
Oh, giving feedback.
I try to do it real-time every single day, right? So I try not to wait for annual performance evaluation. So if I need to give someone feedback, I try to do it right then in the moment, if I can, right? Or within 24 hours or so. And that's typically just verbally, right? So I'll give feedback, but typically, it's always in a constructive manner, right? It's not, if there's just something an individual could have done to improve, you know, even just a little bit, I'll give them feedback in real time. That's the best way to get any kind of results out of anyone.
Thank you. Do you have a specific example of like a really hard conversation that you've had to have with an employee to give that kind of a constructive feedback, and how'd it go?
Yeah, I have a few. So might as well talk about my police chief, but who, by the way, has been a friend of mine for 20 years and still is. You know, that whole situation was, there were some internal and external politics involved in that, in that situation, by the way. Just because someone did a public records request and sends it to the news media doesn't mean it's news. But we had some difficult conversations, and we've had a few over the last few years. You know, we were the first police department in the county to implement, you know, body cameras. You know, we brought in the Center for Public Safety Management to come in and look at, do an operational analysis of law enforcement and make sure that we're adhering to best practices. So we've had a lot of conversation about police operations and specifically, community policing and engagement, and ways to improve upon that.
Moving into a question more about economic development, can you provide some examples of how you have specifically targeted developers or businesses to drive economic development? And tell us how you would use this approach in Treasure Island to help us pursue more development in our key areas like downtown, John's Pass, and the former yacht club?
So depends what type of business we're talking about. So we created a restaurant incentive program, right? Or downtown in our just the work Northwest neighborhood. So we created restaurant incentive programs. We've awarded eight grants, of which four are open, so we've got 40 restaurants in our downtown Lake Wells. We've also, we have a shortage of building inventory in Lake Wales, so we're missing a lot of leads coming in from the Central Florida Development Council, because we don't have buildings to move into. So speed to market is like kind of number one. It's number one in Florida. Like, businesses moving in to the area don't want a greenfield site and then construct, it's three years now before they can get going, and so they need buildings that are ready to move into. So we created recently an Economic Development Center program based, it's an impact fee mitigation program proportionate to the amount of square feet for spec buildings to be constructed within Lake Wales. So we are actually working with our first developers right now that are utilizing that program to build some spec buildings in our industrial park to move businesses into.
You've touched base a little bit on this next question as well, but what hands-on experience have you had with working with the police and fire departments? What's been the biggest oversight issue you faced, and how did you resolve it? And what are the lessons learned from that experience?
I've been, well, you know, I started in the field, so I've been working with public safety for a long time. And that includes, you know, we had our own dispatch, and so that includes even setting up our computer-added dispatching system for both fire and police, right? And so I've been working with them for a long, long time, but in terms of oversight, so I'll tell you, I mentioned some of the items. So in terms of, you know, ways to improve, bringing in CPSM, initiating body cam, body worn camera program, getting the department credentialed, creating a community liaison officer that engages with the public, and even create, re-establishing a community relations kind of advisory committee. So those are ways that, items we've implemented to help improve the department.
Tell us about a time when you were able to remain objective and open to another viewpoint even when you did not agree with it.
I'm just, I'm always objective. I always, I only want things to be the best. I don't care who has the best idea or who it comes from. Doesn't matter, I don't care if I like the person or if I don't like them. I always try to take, you know, personalities out of situation. And anything that, any idea that I can take to improve a process or a project or a program, I'm always going to be open to.
Thank you.
James, as you well know, the city manager is responsible for juggling numerous projects and initiatives simultaneously. Tell us about how you manage multiple projects and communicating progress updates to the appropriate people.
So the short answer is, so we use Smart Sheets. It's a project management program and software citywide. So we use that to help keep our projects on track and to inform. So, you know, you can put your project updates in there, everybody can see them, you know, through the program, and we publish a lot of that information on our city's website through our public-facing dashboards. We also have bi-weekly capital project meetings where we're going over every single capital project, determine where it's at in the process, and is it on budget, is it on, are there any issues, and is it going to meet the timeline? So we, you know, we do that every other week.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead and, no. Go ahead and take your drink, and then I'll.
Okay, thank you.
Shut up here. Okay, tell us how you may have or would help a divided governing body achieve consensus on a politically divisive issue.
Well, if James comes in, it's your city manager, the first thing we're going to do, it's been a while, I think it looks like maybe late 2019, maybe early 2020 was the last time, maybe there's been a statistically valid committee-wide survey. So I would want to do that almost immediately to gauge the citizen perception of how the government's operating and to determine what their priorities are. We'll use that, the city commission, as the basis to create some strategic priorities. You'll, we'll literally have a retreat, and then you're going to agree upon what the strategic priorities are. From those strategic priorities, we'll establish, you know, an action plan to get those accomplished. So we're going to reference that. So if you've got a politically divided issue, we're going to go back to what your adopted, agreed-upon priorities are, and use that as the basis for decision-making. And we're going to talk about it. You all are going to discuss it, and then we're going to put it to a vote.
What specific steps would you take to achieve consensus?
Well, I'm going to, I mean, personally, I'm going to try to get, we're going to have a staff recommendation on whatever the item is, first of all. So it's going to be thoroughly, it's going to be thoroughly researched, and we're going to provide a recommendation, and we're going to keep you pointed to the, what those strategic priorities are.
Okay, let me give you an example, if I may. Staff provides a recommendation to the commission, the commission reviews it, and we're satisfied with that. Then we look out on the audience at a commission meeting, and there's 100 people in here who have the opposite opinion. How do you manage getting consensus here?
Consensus on the commission? If the commission agrees, and there's 100 people here, we may, if it's that important, you've got 100 people, we may need to take a pause and determine if it's the right thing. I don't want to do that in real time, so I don't know that I talked about this with you all, but for reasons just like this, in between our city commission meetings, I have standing work sessions with our commissioners. Oftentimes, so I don't want commissioners to have to vote on important controversial topics or complex agenda items that they may not fully understand yet and feel the pressure to have to vote. I have to think about things typically for a few days. I have to think about things typically for a few days and then I'll even have even, you know, more questions. The only time commissioners really get to talk are during the city commission meetings. So, in between our, the week prior to our city commission meetings, I have work sessions with just myself and the city commissioners to talk about those potentially controversial items. The first thing we do is we go over the agenda items. And that gives the commission opportunity to have that discussion in an open meeting. It gives the city commission the time to discuss, ask questions, give staff the time to make any corrections prior to the, or even do some more research prior to the actual vote taking place at the following, at the subsequent week's city commission meeting. And it's also a venue for the city commissioners to just talk and talk through those items. Typically, what happens is have to be published in advance. So, they're published on Tuesday, we have a work session on Wednesday. That gives the city commission a lot of opportunity and the public to already see, hear the items, hear the city commission dialogue before you ever have to vote on it. So, you've got all the way up till the following week's commission meeting to learn how the, you know, the public feels about it. And if at the end of the day, you know, it could be that based on the feedback, based on discussion you heard from the other commissioners, maybe now it's not the time to do the thing. And so, it doesn't go on the agenda. Is that helpful?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. How do you feel about receiving voicemails and emails from the mayor and city commission after normal working hours? Are there any off-limits times for you?
No. I will tell you, because we communicate so much and during the work sessions, we talk about that big-ticket stuff, there's always going to be a lot more communication. There's a lot more early on. But as we tend to move forward, make progress, communicating every single week. So, you know, my commission, we meet, we have four meetings plus our CRA meetings. We're meeting five times a month. The weekend after-hours calls, unless there's something important or emergency, tend to slow down. Little stuff, there's a street light out, you know, the tennis courts or whatever. That's, I don't care about that, send it. I do, I've been in the same place for 20 years in various positions. Everybody in town has my phone number. So, I'm used to it. I'll tell you, if I'm out on the boat, probably I won't be able to get to it right away. But yeah, I'm accessible and available to the city commission 24 hours a day.
I joked earlier that this was probably one that involves the commission, but it also could be residents as well. And it's, how do you effectively handle having so many bosses who may sometimes have differing goals and agendas?
So, I have one boss, the city commission. And so, I act on the consensus of the board. And we, you all will establish those priorities. You're going to establish priorities and adopt them. So, there shouldn't be a lot of deviations, you know, from one commissioner, I would think, to another as relates to the big-ticket items. And so, if there's something that needs, we'll say a request that insignificant items, there's a pothole here, you know, those types of things, we're just going to go take care of. If there's something that's of consequence or substantial that commissioner would like for the staff to do, that really needs to be discussed with the commission. So, we'll have that discussion during a work session if you were to implement something like that. We'll have that discussion as a group and then we'll take that consensus and then my action will be based off what that consensus is. The second thing is, I will, it's just who I am. I build real relationships with people. So, it's important to have true relationships with every single city commissioner and every single city commissioner is treated with the same, exact same amount of reverence and respect.
Thank you.
Should you be appointed as Treasure Island's successor city manager? What would you like to be remembered for in your previous post?
In my previous post?
From where you're coming from.
Oh, man.
It's kind of a tough one, isn't it?
No, no, it's not, it's not tough. Actually, go look it up. They wrote an article, an article about this morning in the paper.
That's an emotional question, I'm sure.
I think people will tell you that I changed the trajectory of the entire community forever. People's lives are better. They've got more money in their pockets. We've increased the area median income. We've increased our property values. Their parks are better. People have places. We're bringing in jobs, places to work, place for people to eat. I've got an underserved community that I'm building houses in. I've got a major pedestrian improvement project, just signed a contract this week. You know, we'll have folks that'll be able to push their babies on a sidewalk and out the middle of the road. I think just overall, I would say that the people that live there, their lives have been forever changed and improved and not only them, the generations that come behind them.
Good answer, thank you. Does the commission have any follow-up questions to anything that we've asked? We have quite a bit of time left with this candidate, so any follow-up?
I have, I have a question. And I, and you and I touched on this briefly during our discussion yesterday. But what makes you nervous or apprehensive about the, about moving here and taking on this job?
Nothing.
I think that was the same answer you had yesterday, too. That's good. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I'd like, I know, I asked you to kind of elaborate on it, but I think this is really important. So, I want to take some, even some more time with coming into the staff. Like, can you really dive into like just some practical examples of how you would work with and come to learn from people that we have on staff here currently? Like a game plan for the first 30 days? Like what specifically are you going to do with our directors and our staff to really learn about the inner workings of our city as it is?
So, I'll be meeting with folks one-on-one, probably every day and having discussions. I'll review the staff resumes. We will probably do some sort of personality assessment. SGR does, they have a great input-output processing template that, I'm not going to say it's a personality test, but it, let's call it that. And then we'll map the staff, determine what everyone's personality types are like and then how we all fit together and more importantly, how I fit with them so we can understand how each other thinks and operates. I'll do that very early on.
If you were to become the city manager.
Yes, sir.
I would hope, and you can follow up with, but I would hope that you would build a unbelievable relationship with the staff that we have. I mean, everybody here has worked hard. Everybody has made it better. I've been on the commission going on four years now. And the changes that we have seen in our fire department, our police department, our public works, our parks and recreation, unbelievable. I mean, the amount of energy that we have that's in this room right now is unbelievable. And, you know, we're trying to do a lot of things that other communities haven't even thought about. And when one of those is, you know, talking about the, what we're going to do with flooding and everything else and elevate TI. And so, we have a lot of, like I said, the energy is unbelievable. And I would hope that you would harness that. And I think that in harnessing that energy, it probably is really keeping in touch with the directors of all the departments on a almost daily basis. And not a hindrance of any form to the directors, but just getting to know the city and getting to know everything about our way of life here. You know, we call it paradise and we enjoy that, so.
That's exactly how I operate.
Can you elaborate on, you mentioned that Lake Wales has a CRA and you mentioned that that would be part of your plan or a potential opportunity for us here. Can you expand on that for those of us up here that might not be familiar with a CRA? And based on your knowledge of Treasure Island and the, I know there's a lot of restrictions on where you can have a CRA. Is that something that you think we'd be able to qualify for here in Treasure Island?
Absolutely, I do. So, the first thing you have to perform a finding of necessity, right? To establishing, we'll bring in a firm, they'll do a study. And then, there's a lot of criteria. It's not that difficult. There's a lot of criteria within the statute and prescribing how to form a CRA. So, we bring in a firm, we take our finding of necessity, then we begin to coordinate with Pinellas County. Pinellas County is a little bit different. They've got some, a pretty strict set of their own criteria on how they award tax increment. Their funds going to a tax increment revenue. I've looked at it, it's, so it can be done, it is being done. And so, it just depends on what comes out of that finding of necessity. If it's only, we're not talking about slum and blight, but only for economic development purposes. I think from what I remember, you know, Pinellas only give up to 5% or 50% of the tax increment revenue. You know, statutorily, we could potentially get up to 95% of that TIF, but potentially up to 50%.
Can you elaborate on tax increment revenue to TIFs? We've heard that mentioned a lot, but I don't think it's something that we're familiar with. So, how do you, how do you utilize that and what's the benefit of doing so?
Yeah, so, so what would happen is if you establish, let's say a CRA area with boundaries, the properties within that area. So, if it were to occur in 2024, for example, that becomes the base year in terms of value. So, everything prior to that base year, all the taxes and we're talking about the ad valorem, just get handled like they always have. But every year after that, for the duration of time that you have, that CRA area, the tax is over and above and we're talking about value. As a value increases, that's a tax increment, those funds go into the trust fund. So, you collect both the city and the county's ad valorem, they go into that trust fund. That trust fund, you can only spend, they're really flexible, CRAs are funny, they're really flexible on how you can spend the dollars, but they just have to be in your plan. So, you have to adopt a CRA plan. And within that plan, you'll have things like your business strategies or incentives or streetscape projects, for example. So, as long as they're within your plan, you can spend your tax increment revenue on those types of programs and activities. We're funding our downtown construction through our CRA. Now, we've had CRA for a long time. And so, those values, those values are pretty high, so we're generating some income. We're doing a lot of construction, it's working, the values are increasing. We've doubled it actually over the last three years. So, we've gone from generating just over $2 million a year to just over $4 million a year in tax increment revenue. And we've also pledged that against some debt to fund our construction that we're also supplementing with other grant sources. But, so it's going to take some time because of that base year to increase the values enough. It'll take some time to build up that trust fund, but there are some, it'll also open up some tools in the toolkit by just having the CRA. And that, those are things like, and I'll go back to tax increment rebates, for example. If you want to incentivize the business, you can rebate that TIF revenue back to them each year as an incentive to come into your town or stay in your town, for that matter.
After you've taken a period of time to get to know city staff, what is your, or how would you approach communicating with city staff down the road? Do you have weekly meetings, monthly meetings, one-on-ones? How do you, how would you do it?
Both, it would be both. So, we, I think with people one-on-one on a regular basis. Matter of fact, I'll be, I'll probably draw them ups because I'll be going by, going by their offices, visiting them so much. So, I deal with people one-on-one, we'll have group meetings. And those can be, you know, either standing staff meetings on a weekly basis or bi-weekly basis or monthly. And so, we have so much growth. I have long-range planning meetings, bring in those key infrastructure departments and, you know, even quarterly. We, you know, we're looking at Lake Wales and making plans 10, 20 years, you know, down the road. So, we have, I'll bring in these separate, you know, city departments and we'll meet on, you know, specific projects. I mean, just, we meet a lot.
Thank you.
Yeah, it'll be a lot of face-to-face engagement, for sure.
I'd like to piggyback on that if I can. Also encouraging staff development and attrition planning and building up through the ranks. Do you plan on incorporating that if you were selected?
Yeah, so, we'll do a professional development plan for everyone. I want everyone to be the best at what they do, right? So, I wrote this somewhere and truthfully, my approach, I didn't, I didn't come up with this, right? Kind of a concept, but really it's autonomy, master and purpose. So, those are the, those are the keys to employee motivation. It really seems to work. Let people do the things that they're passionate about while supporting them to master whatever their craft is, supporting their continuing education and training and really championing it and incentivizing those types of things. And so, that is my approach, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And sometimes it works too well. I've got, sometimes it works too well. I'll tell you, I've lost some folks over the last few years that if, that I hated to see go, but they moved on to, you know, bigger cities. And I've got one assistant city manager running around the area right now that started with me five years ago, superstar. So, sometimes retention, you can create the best environment in the world for people and they can be happy and grow and prosper, but, you know, sometimes you can't hold on to them all.
That's true.
All right. Anything else?
I'm good.
All right. So, now we want to just give you some time, if you have any questions for us that you want clarification on the city, what our objectives are, any, anything that you have for the commission?
Yeah, so.
You can ask us one-on-one or each of us to give an answer?
No, 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 let's do this, all right? So, we've had so much fun with your questions today. So, how about each of you describe for me three words, what you want Treasure Island to be in 10 years? Three words or less?
Who wants to go first?
So, that was kind of, you don't have to do that. So, I thought about this last night. So, you don't, you don't have to, but.
I'll give it, I'll give it. I think, I think, I think most of the people I talk to want Treasure Island to remain as close to what it is right now, to be a paradise. I can tell you what we don't want, and I know this is a lot more than three words. What we don't want is to be the next Clearwater Beach. We don't want to be built up, overbuilt. We don't want to be the next St. Pete Beach. We do want redevelopment, responsible redevelopment, but we don't want overdevelopment.
Thank you, sir.
All right. My three would be vibrant, welcoming and safe.
Okay.
I would agree. You know, I think that this is one of the safest communities that I know of. And everybody, that's why our residents, you know, are here. So, safe is one of the big issues. You know, we do call it paradise and that's because it's a beautiful setting and we want to continue to see that. And we also want it to be a community that is family-friendly and continually redeveloping the businesses. You know, the restaurants and, you know, all of the shops and everything else, you know, over time. You know, we're going to see some come and some go, but we want to see that redevelopment on an active basis. You know, to take a look at how much property we have that is just empty for a small community is a shame. And that's why, you know, that we are really. And, and that's why, you know, that we are really interested in the redevelopment and, you know, the, a lot of the things you brought this morning in your presentation, we want to continue to grow, but we want to do it, you know, at a legitimate, I'm going to call it legitimate pace and, and be able to work with all of the businesses that are potentially looking. I know that we talked a little bit about that you've heard and about some developers that don't necessarily want to come to Treasure Island because they, they don't see it as business-friendly. I'm not sure why that is, but I think that we need to continue to open our doors to the businesses and try to bring in the development because if you're, if you stop doing redevelopment, you die. So you're going to have to move forward.
Can I take more than three words?
Do whatever you want.
I would think it would be a place where our residents are proud to live.
Proud to live. You got three? Okay. Well, congratulations, you're there.
So my three would be thriving, enjoyable, and unified. And just to expand on that, I think enjoyable for all families, our residents and our visitors. That's a big balancing act to, to get to be an enjoyable place for both of those contingencies. To be a great residential place, but also be a great place for people to visit. Don't often go hand-in-hand, but they certainly can. And I think we have a great, we're poised to be able to do that. And unified, we have so much going on, on the horizon. We have so much potential. But there's also a lot of potential for disagreement and disunification that we need to make sure that we avoid. So being careful as we tread down this path of progressiveness and creating a new identity for ourselves. We need to make sure that we remain unified as a, as a commission and as, as a community. But that was, I mean, the main reason I ran for mayor was I grew up here and I want to make sure that Treasure Island continues to be a great place to raise a family, to live for our, for our residents. I mean, that's our primary objective and should be the most important thing is that people enjoy living here. And the development goes into that. I mean, we have a lot of opportunity and our residents need great places to go to eat and shop and be able to live in the city that they call home and not have to go somewhere else to get the services and go somewhere else to eat for dinner. We want to keep everyone here and keep everyone happy and thriving as Treasure Island.
Well, thank you all. I've thoroughly enjoyed this last two days and just learning a lot more about the island and the folks that live here. Yeah, your work cut out for you. It's a very important decision, whatever decision you make. You're all going to make the right decision. You've got a great community, you've got great residents and you have great staff. So I think you're going to be in good shape. So pleasure to meet you all and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thanks, James.
So at this time, I think we're ready to break for an early lunch or maybe a little recess before lunch might be.
Yes.
11:45?
Yeah, we've, I've got the next candidate queued up. I told him that we might be starting at noon versus 12:15 if you wanted to take a half an hour lunch. I've been told from Jessica, lunch is being brought into the lobby now. So it's your call if you want to take the 4:45 or if you want to regroup at.
No, I think if we can start back up at noon, that'd be good. Is that good with you?
Oh, yeah, no, that's good.
Okay.
All right. Are we doing lunch here or recess? All right, well, adjourn the meeting for now. Thank you, everyone.